All right, I'd consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, second.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion passes unanimously. Next item, I'd consider a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second, roll call vote, please.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Karski.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. All right, that takes us to regular business. First item is a public hearing and second reading for rezoning number 2302. To consider an amendment to the 1990 revised zoning ordinance for Minnehaha County. Mason, good morning.
Good morning Commissioners, Mason Stephan from the County Planning Office. So yes, this request is to rezone approximately 12.91 acres from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District. And the parcel is located at the intersection of 250th Street and Interstate 29 and is adjacent to several other commercial properties. The petitioner owns, for this request, owns the properties to the north and is requesting this rezoning so that he may expand those existing businesses onto this property. This item has been before the Planning Commission and was unanimously recommended for approval. And the second, first reading has taken place and now requires a public hearing in front of the county board. Therefore, the County Board of Commissioners may vote to approve or deny the proposed zoning ordinance amendment, ordinance rezoning 2302. And then I'll just quickly scroll through some pictures so we can get an idea of where that property is again. So these two properties on the north, the west one is an auto body shop and the east one is existing storage units. As of now, the petitioner would like to expand the storage units onto this property, but they may expand the auto body shop. So those are kind of the plans for the future of this commercial lot. And this is kind of showing one of the proposed storage unit buildings. Here's looking at the existing access to the storage unit buildings. You can tell that this was only a month ago, there was a lot of snow still on the ground. But here's looking at that auto body shop also. And then right here, looking to the south would be where the access and driveway goes down into the new property where the new storage units would be. And then here's looking to the gas station to the west there. And that should be good for the location and I am available for any questions if you have them.
Commissioner Karski.
Any opposition from any of the neighbors?
I have not received any opposition. We did receive a call from one of the neighbors to the east. I do believe that the petitioner has talked to them about what their plans are. I have not heard anything else from them, but...
The east is the residential properties?
Correct. I'm not sure exactly which one, but the planning director did talk to one of those neighbors and subsequently the petitioner talked to the neighbor as well and I have not heard anything else.
Thank you.
Anything else? So this is a public hearing. I'd invite the proponents, if there's anybody here in favor of this proposal to come forward to speak. Is nobody here to speak on behalf of this proposal? Is there anybody here to speak in opposition to this proposal? Don't see a lot of movement out there, so I guess we don't need a rebuttal and I'll turn it over to the commissioners.
And make a motion to approve.
Some motion and a second. Any further discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Bennega.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Leinberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye, motion passes unanimously, thank you. That takes us to item 12, which is to consider a motion to authorize Minnehaha County as a sub-recipient of the South Dakota Attorney General's... Did I skip one? I thought I did, okay, thank you. Sorry Judge. So item 11, Second Judicial Court Annual Brief. Judge Robin Howman.
All right, good morning Commissioners, Robin Howman, presiding judge for Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties, which is the Second Judicial Circuit. Thank you for having me here today. For our two new commissioners, I thought I'd just quickly outline what some of the courthouse structure looks like as well as the people who are there. I've listed for you the 12 Circuit Court Judges and four magistrate judges that we have currently practicing in the courthouse. Judge Douglas Barnett is our newest judge, he was elected last year and took office in January. And Judge Hoffman is our most senior judge, having been here since 2005. Over this last legislative year, we did have an additional magistrate position approved for the Second Judicial Circuit. Applications are currently being received for that position. We plan to interview for that position on May 10th and hope to have that person in place right around the beginning of July. Next, I have a, just a brief snapshot of the caseload of the Second Judicial Circuit. We have seven circuits within the state of South Dakota. And you can see, as you would expect, the Second Circuit has about 34% of that caseload. Interestingly, we have 25% of the resources to manage that caseload from the unified judicial system. The average number of cases that a judge in South Dakota hears is 2,900. In the Second Circuit, our average is 3,900. So we do have a substantial caseload. The magistrate judge who will be coming on in July will help even out to some extent that distribution. Our fiscal year ends at the end of June, but up to date so far, a couple of interesting trends that we've noted is that our juvenile cases are trending upwards, about 12% so far this year. Our divorce cases are up 25% so far this year. And our criminal cases are down between 5% and 10%. Those tend to increase once it gets nicer, so we expect those numbers to come back up. There's really no way for us to measure though how long those cases take, even though some of those numbers seem to be trending down. We do note a lot of congestion currently in the courts. Some of our judges are scheduling hearings out into August and September because their schedules are booked. So we really are feeling some of the pressure and hope that additional magistrate judge will help alleviate some of that. Just some interesting statistics, we have about 1,300 visitors per day on average at the courthouse. We hear about 85,000 hearings. We have 18 total courtrooms, that includes the courtroom at the jail and at the juvenile detention center. Currently, we're averaging about 50 jury trials per year. A few years ago, that was averaging at 90. I don't know that COVID really had an impact on that, we're not sure exactly what has led to us having fewer jury trials. But we do see most of the trials that are set end up settling usually a day or two before. So we're always ramping up for jury trials, but in the end are averaging about 50 per year. We have about 125 employees that work in the courthouse next door. And Carl loves this statistic that the Minnehaha County courthouse is actually larger than the state capital, so we have a lot of space to cover over there. As you know, our population is growing exponentially and we expect over the next number of years that that will include an increase in our cases, not only in Minnehaha or, but also in Lincoln County. Some significant developments, I've already talked a little bit about the magistrate judge position. Likely, we're going to share that position between Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties. One of the things that we need to accomplish before July is remodeling two offices that currently exist on the third floor. We have a small office that we call a visiting judge office and then we have a larger magistrate judge chambers. And so we're going to essentially make those two offices the same size. We're just waiting for the contractors to come in and actually get that work done. And that will allow us to house that magistrate judge. And that will bring the total number of our judges here in the Second Circuit up to 17. One of the major focuses that we've had over the last couple of years is security in and around the courthouse. As you might recall, in 2000, we had the National Center for State Courts come in and do a security assessment of our facility, not only here at the courthouse, but also out at JDC. One of the recommendations of that security assessment was the formulation of a courthouse security committee. And we did form that committee in about 2021. That committee is up and it's operational, we meet quarterly. And we've had a number of projects that we've been working on. One of those was the key card and access system upgrade. That has been completed, we did most of that work or funded most of that work through a grant through the Department of Homeland Security. We also have a duress alarm project that we are hoping to be, have completed by the end of this year. We need to get some additional bids and configuration for our duress alarm system. And then our other big project over the course of the next year will be to identify some security glass upgrades. The unified judicial system, last year or the year before, was able to get $5 million from the South Dakota State Legislature to enhance courthouse security across the state. And we hope to utilize those grant fundings or a portion of those grant fundings for both the security glass project as well as the upgrade to the duress alarm system. The next project I wanted to talk about is our records project. And I'm actually going to have Carl come up and describe that for you because he is the one who's been the boots on the ground with this project. And if you have any questions, he'd be the one to answer those.
Good morning Commissioners, Commissioner's Carl Tonis, Court Administrator for Lincoln and Minnehaha Counties, Second Circuit. I'll try to keep this short because I know records management is not a thrilling topic, but on the other hand, as you'll see, I think it has significant long-term financial implications for the county. And so we wanted to start this discussion over the next few months to suggest that we come to some solution long-term for the storage of all these records. As we mentioned in the briefing sheet, according to state statute and court rule, there are some case categories that we must keep permanently. Divorces, for example, adoptions, felonies, traffic tickets we shred after a period, small claims we shred after 10 years after the expiration of the judgment, but there are those case categories that we must keep permanently. Since statehood, we've, when I say we, I mean the courts in Minnehaha County. And when I say courts, I mean even the historical obsolete courts like municipal court or county courts prior to the consolidation in the 1970s have accumulated 10,000 cubic feet of court records. And to give you some idea of 10,000 cubic feet, that would fill three standard railroad car, two standard railroad cars or three tractor trailers. And so it's a significant amount of records. When I think it over late at night, it's, it produces some anxiety that we've accumulated that much. Of those 10,000, approximately 2,000 are here in the courthouse next door or in the public safety building. About 8,000 of those cubic feet are stored in off-site private storage. For a number of years, for longer than I've been here, we stored them at a private storage facility called Records Keepers. And the price was relatively stable for year after year, about 2,000 a month. So it came to about 24,000 a year, somewhere in that ballpark. Last year, Records Keepers was sold to a major national conglomerate called Vital Records Control, VRC. And in that time, the monthly charge has doubled. The bill we got last month was $4,900. So what used to be a 24,000 or 30,000 annual expense has now turned into a annual expense more like 60. We anticipate that that cost escalation will continue. And you can do the math as easily as I can, multiply it over a year, over a decade, we're talking just thousands and thousands of dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so we would suggest that over the next few months, we have a discussion about what to do with those records. As an experimental exercise, we had Active Data Systems, ADS, here in Sioux Falls, scan some court records. Lincoln County scanned about 176 boxes because they needed to clear a basement room that was prone to flooding. Here, at UJS expense initially, because we just wanted to step through the exercise, because it gets complex, of digitally scanning paper records, we scanned about 8,000 adoption records for decades back, just to go through the exercise. And it went really well. One of the attractive things to the county, and the reason why we'd suggest that we consider digitization or scanning of the records, is that once they're scanned, we shred the paper. It's no longer a county responsibility, it's no longer a county expense, it becomes a technology task and UJS and the state assumes all the responsibility and all the costs thereafter. So the county unloads that responsibility, that expense, long-term. On the other hand, scanning 10,000 records, well, to give you an idea, now, this depends on how much prep we do on our end, whether the county and the court were to choose an outside contractor that would involve shipping expenses elsewhere, that sort of thing. So there are a lot of variables, but just to give you a ballpark, the scanning exercise we did over the past year worked out to about $300 a box. Minnehaha County is sitting on the equivalent, standard record-sized boxes are about 1 1/2 cubic feet. If you do the math, that's about 6,600 standard records boxes. 6,600 standard records boxes times $312 to scan all the paper in those boxes works out to somewhere around $2 million. And so this is a really large project. You can imagine why I lose a little sleep at night when I consider the volume and the magnitude of what this project involves. On the other hand, like I said, you could do the math, you can figure out how much this is going to cost the county long-term. And so I think at some point, we really should have that discussion about what to do with this records volume. But for now, we wanted to give you that briefing, we wanted to start the discussion and hope we can work together over the next few months to come up with some solution long-term. Any questions before I step back to Judge Howman? Thank you.
Commissioner Karski?
Yeah, sorry Carl. Get permission to speak, I guess. When I think about, you know, the volume of boxes or I guess the data, who's responsible for maintaining in the accuracy of that data, being able to recall that data? I mean, does electronic data ever go bad? I mean, help me understand more of that process.
Yeah, when it comes to long-term integrity of that data, there's still great debate among archivists and the State Records Board and UJS about what the best long-term retention might be. For example, the State Records Board still insists that we might, we convert the digital scans to microfilm because they say microfilm has a longer record of retention and integrity. On the other hand, if we save everything to a server and then back that server up, in other words, rewrite the data, refresh it periodically, which everybody does, I don't think we do a daily rewrite, but we do a periodic rewrite, that eliminates the concern about deterioration of digital backups. And so, given that, we'll have those multiple backups and, at least for now, microfilm. The process is incredibly complex, as you can imagine, because the clerks of court verify, they do a sample verification that the scanning was done well, captured all the images, that the images are all oriented the right way, that they didn't cut off a piece of it. So the clerks of court approve it, then UJS approves it, then the state archivist approves it, and then we move it to the state servers. And so there are multiple copies made along that trail. So it's very secure. You're exactly right, though, and I think there's still a lot of discussion about long-term integrity of data. For example, there's a 15-year retention on court reporter tape recordings. Back in the days when we electronically recorded some courtrooms onto cassette, after about eight or 10 years, you put those cassettes in a machine and you won't, all you'll hear is noise. And so there is definitely concern about long-term integrity of digitized data, but given the layers and the multiple copies that would be involved in any digitization process now, I think that's probably no longer a concern.
Okay, thank you.
I'll just follow up one point on what Carl mentioned. All of our records since we went to the Odyssey system in 2013, we don't keep any paper records, so there's a history of us not keeping paper records. All of our records from 2013 forward are in electronic form.
That was somewhat of a backup question that I had, I mean, why don't we start doing it, so we already have, 10 years ago started doing this, so these are old.
These are old, these are very old. And if we had the staff support to begin scanning those records, we would obviously do that, but we just don't have the staff to do that. If we'd skip the next slide and go to the law library, just wanted to highlight for you some of the things that we have planned over the course of the next year and something we may be coming to you next year for approval for. I do believe that in the next legislative session, we will be asking the legislature to approve an additional circuit court judge for the Second Circuit as well as a couple of other full-time employees. We don't know exactly the details of what that will be, we have to have our budget submission done in July, so between now and then, we'll really be identifying what those positions are that we'll be requesting from the legislature. If we do have that additional judge, and in part because we are getting this new magistrate judge and have one of our courtrooms being utilized for grand jury, we do believe that we're going to have to find space for an additional courtroom in the courthouse. When we had our security evaluation back in 2020, one of the gentlemen who was conducting that evaluation was a courthouse architect. And he identified that we might have that need for a courtroom in the future and gave us some examples of where that courtroom could be and how things could be redesigned to accommodate an additional courtroom. So looking forward, we believe that our next big remodeling project within the courthouse would be to remodel the current law library on the fourth floor and turn that into a hearing room. That would require that we relocate some offices. We believe that we have the space to relocate that and reconfigure them in addition to building the hearing room. Because that includes a lot of different moving parts, we believe that there might be some need for architecture or some sort of drawing specialist to lay out specifically what that type of remodel project would look like. So that would conclude the update that I have for you. Just recapped on that last page, the priorities, we're remodeling that chambers for a new magistrate. We anticipate that new judge request for next year and the potential for the law library remodel. Carl explained to you our records project and then we'll be continuing always to enhance security within the courthouse. Any questions?
I always do, yeah. Thank you. You know, the longer you've been around, the more you probably know what questions to ask and it's always a learning process, maybe it's just for me, but I'd like to believe it's for everybody, so. The court pays for the ju, or I'm sorry, the state pays for judges?
Yes.
Correct? The taxpayers of the county pay for the courtroom, the building, all your staff, or maybe...
They do not pay for staff, the unified judicial system also pays for our staff.
For your staff, but I guess security?
Security is a county expense.
Okay, okay. Just kind of, I guess, for my clarity and for anybody that might also care about it, so just so everybody kind of has an idea that it's really the state and the county with an interplay on making this work.
It really is, so for instance, the law library remodel, the majority of that remodel would be a county expense, but for things such as getting wires from a jack in the floor to the computers that we place in the courtroom, those are UJS expense.
Interesting, okay.
So that's why I wanted to get this potential remodel on your radars.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, all right, thank you, have a good day.
All right, now we're on item 12.
Good morning. Daniel Hager, Minnehaha County State's Attorney, appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about what I think is a really good thing for the county, asking for permission to be a sub-recipient under this grant that the Attorney General's Office is seeking from the Office of Violence Against Women. Through that grant, they try and look for ways to improve criminal justice results. Specifically, what we're hoping to do with this grant money, if authorized from this commission, is to set up that team. A few weeks ago, we had talked about this body head authorize the seeking of another grant with a VWA victim witness assistant. Under this grant, we'd receive funding a little over $700,000. What we'd hope to do with that is hire a deputy state's attorney, a part-time prosecutor, not prosecutor, part-time investigator in the office as well. We'd also continue to fund part of an FTE in the sheriff's office. They have an investigator that's doing some of that early work on the cases. The part-time investigator under this grant would take some of that stuff after the case is filed, some of that follow-up investigation. But what we're looking to do is really improve the outcomes in the criminal justice system and in prosecution on those high-risk, high-lethality crimes of violence against those intimate partners. So what had previously been called like domestic violence, intimate partner violence. A lot of times, we struggle to connect those victims initially to resources that they need to keep them on board with prosecution early on. So setting up this team would really pour into those victims, try and get them in a better place and try and root out that domestic violence in Minnehaha County. There is a statewide component. Under this grant, the Pennington County State's Attorney's Office would also help organize a statewide lethality review team. Working with them helps us make sure that what we are seeing here and the processes and the efficiencies we're creating could be modeled statewide. We'd evaluate some of the cases and say, okay, were there times when these victims were coming into contact with the criminal justice system and how many times did they do that? You know, are there areas where we were failing them, where we could do better? And just try and improve process so that the good work we're doing in Minnehaha County, the good work that they're doing in Pennington benefits the whole state. So I am asking for authorization from this body to be a sub-recipient. It's for 36 months, so no, I guess no cost to the county, which I think is a good thing under this grant.
Go ahead.
Dan, how much growth have you had in the cases for, I call it domestic violence yet? You call it office of violence?
I'm sorry, I turned it off. Office of Violence Against Women or Domestic Violence, you've had growth, but how much growth has that been?
Good question, and you're going to steal some of my thunder on my next presentation, but what we are seeing, these types of cases are growing tremendously. If you look at just last year to this year, the aggravated assault, which is some of that very serious assault that's happening, whether that person's using a weapon, a firearm, whether that's strangulation, we had over 1,000 cases this year. Previously, it's been in the 800s, so we're seeing that increase. Again, I'm going to talk about this next, but the felony crime as a percentage of our caseload is, I don't want to say skyrocketing, I don't want to, but it is definitely increasing. The felony crime is up 3% from last year, it's 34% of our caseload. And so these are the types of crimes that we're seeing that increase in, and so trying to address that is an important thing. Great question, thank you.
I guess the other question, if I may, is how many times do you see repeat customers?
I get asked that question a lot. And when we have our daily chargeouts, right, so every morning, the legal office assistants, the VWAs, the prosecutors come in and they start saying, okay, who was arrested last night, trying to figure out. It's easier for me to try and figure out who isn't a repeat offender. Unfortunately, recidivism is... Unfortunately, recidivism is very common. And so it's, it's rare to have someone where we have not, or the criminal justice system has not seen them before.
No questions. A comment from 8 o'clock to 8:45 this morning. Commissioner Kipley and I met with the public defender. And obviously, state's attorney and public defender, you know, a little bit of an adversarial relationship there. So I am supportive of your request here. But just the caution I want to give is that anytime we hire another prosecutor, defenders save that, we have more to defend now. So while one might be free, the other one probably won't be. So just as a, you know, the crimes committed by some of these people are just crimes against society and just terrible, and they need to be prosecuted, but they also need to be defended. And we get to pay for both. We, the taxpayers. So I'm glad to see that you're pursuing this. But just the heads up that you know it's going to be coming. Go ahead.
I guess as long as I've been in public service, you talk to the police department and the sheriff's department and the attorneys, every one of them will say the same thing. The case that they hate going into is a domestic violence case because they really have no idea what's going to happen when they go to the front door. That is scary. And when you read the paper and listen to the news, it's, I wouldn't say wild, but I can't come up with a different description.
You're right. I think part of what makes these cases difficult is the, the level of emotion. So as that frontline law enforcement officer is responding to that call or knocking on that door because a neighbor called it in, they don't know what's happening in there. And those individuals, that victim is, you know, they could be in the worst moment of their life at that point. You know, and the officer has to try and sort through, shepherding that victim through that initial investigation, right? It's hard if you're a victim who's just had intimate partner strangle you, right? There's a lot of emotion, a lot of feelings that are going through that. And that moment could be the worst moment of their life. And they've got a law enforcement officer who's trying to figure out what happened, maybe asking him questions. And so to, I guess to law enforcement's credit, they do that really well. And we see the quality of that investigation that comes in. And it's really those steps after that as the individuals in my office are trying to come alongside that person and say, okay, you know, here's what the next steps look like. Because that victim can feel guilt, you know? Like, oh, shoot, you know, I called law enforcement. Now this intimate partner is getting in trouble. And so then they'll start to feel like it was their fault when really it wasn't. So very difficult cases. It's a sad thing for the community, as Commissioner Karski said. But I think what's important is, and maybe just to address what Commissioner Karski said, with these felony cases, the initial work that happens is, is being done by my office. We have in every felony. And I hate going down this road because I start to talk in a very legalese, technical sense. So I want to make sure that, that I'm understood. So if I describe it poorly, just let me know and I'll try again. With every felony case, you have a right to a preliminary hearing in court. It's there. It's a right on every felony case. If the case is presented to a grand jury, that cancels that hearing that happens in court. And so the prosecutor takes, you know, that victim, that evidence that they have, and they present it to a grand jury. There's no defense attorney there. There's no judge. So by doing that, we're saving that time in the courthouse, right? Where a judge would be sitting there, where a defense attorney would be there, to the defendant would be there. But by presenting it to the grand jury, it does save a lot of that costly time in court. But the exchange is that, you know, the state's kind of taking that burden on, right? Our VWAs are working, the prosecutors are. So I certainly want individuals charged with crimes and serious crimes to have good public defense. That's important. Prosecutors want to know that at the end of the day, our convictions are good and we know that because we have good defense attorneys. But there is some work that we do that will not translate over to cost for defense and judges. Ultimately, as these cases continue on, certainly we have those hearings, but those hearings are going to happen anyway. But those initial hearings, that initial work, you know, some of those hearings have to be done within 15 days. So it's a scramble. And so that's why this grant and this investment can help with those.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I just had some questions to confirm on how the FTEs are going to work.
Yes.
I appreciate you reaching out and it sounds like the Attorney General's Office is, is being generous here. I think this is all generally upside. But can you describe a little bit? This is a 36-month term and it does have the possibility to be renewed?
Yes, yes, that is my understanding.
No guarantee, but we--
Correct. And I understand with all grants, and I try and approach them very carefully because I know at the end of those grants, we're going to be looking at people, right? And so I think it's important for me to explain to these individuals as they're being hired, if this body approves that, to say, look, this, this could be three years, right? And there's meaning in those three years. There's valuable experience to be gained for you. If in three years, we can't make your position permanent or grant funding goes away, it, it's not a loss for you, right? And so there will be some conversations that happen in interviews or selection for this. But yeah, the 36 months would cover the attorney, part-time investigator for us. At this point, I'm not asking for that to be full-time. I want this to be something where we're hopefully showing, if it is successful and we are making a lot of progress, maybe I'll approach and say, hey, we could really use full-time. But right now, we're not doing that. Continues to fund sheriff's office. Again, there's some funding under the grant that's not coming to Minnehaw County for the lethality review team. We're paying to counties partnering there. There's also some funding for interpreter services for those victims who don't speak or understand English.
And then just to follow up and continue to clarify, so there's one existing .5 FTE--
Correct.
--at the sheriff's. And so that, is that truly a half-time FTE that already exists? Or is it a full-time employee that we're paying for? The grant is paying for half of their time?
My understanding is full-time. It's Elliot Crane, who is a full-time employee.
So it's a full-time employee, but the grant is going to pay for half of that person's time?
Correct.
So it is a 1.0, but okay, that's, that's fine. And then same question for the .5 FTE for your investigator in your office. Will that be a full-time position that's paid only, the grant pays half? Or it will truly be a part-time 50% position?
Yep. So that is a new position, not currently in there. I'm asking to hire part-time.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I think that's all I had. Thank you.
Just a practical question. You guys just moved into your new space. Will these three positions be housed in, on your floor? Do you have room? You have the space available?
Again, this is, this is, I guess, the fun thing about getting to take up a bunch of commissioner time and have two things. But yes, with the remodel, which we are very appreciative of, we do have space. So they would be on second floor. Apart from the sheriff's office employee who will remain over at the sheriff's office.
Okay, good.
Yeah, I'm sure there's not going to be any objection either. Thank you. Second.
All right, we have a motion, a second. I'm going to ask, is there any public comment on this? Seeing none, we have-- Motion and a second. No public comment? Any public comment? All right, I'd entertain a roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Kipley.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blenberg.
Aye.
Thunder.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes you to item 13, which is the state's attorney's annual briefing.
You all asked good questions on the last item, so I think I can be even briefer than normal. But the state's attorney's office remains committed to public safety, community service, equal justice under the law. I guess I'm, I'm pleased to be here and say that I think it's been a good year in Minnehaw County and the Minnehaw County State's Attorney's Office. We've had some stability in staffing, which is a new thing, which I think everyone in the office has grown to really appreciate. We have been fully staffed in our authorized positions on the attorney side since November. And that's been a really good thing. It's, it helps me when we have all our positions filled to be able to really analyze, okay, do we have needs in areas or are we adequately staffed there? So not having those open positions hanging over our head really helps there. And so that's been a good thing. And certainly appreciate the support that the commission has given us in those areas. Caseload-wise, we had 10,331 new cases opened in our office last year. The good news is, and I said this last year, is that that number is down. But unfortunately, we're really just seeing a shift. You know, some of those lower-level misdemeanors are down. The, the crime that is up, unfortunately, is the crime that takes most of that time. Felonies make up now 34% of that caseload. That's up from 3% from the previous year, 9% over that five-year period. The cases that are up, assaults on law enforcement officers, child abuse, felony assault, aggravated assault, robbery, first-degree burglary, first-degree, those are violent crimes. And unfortunately, it's just becoming a bigger part of our caseload. You know, the, you had asked the, where that trend was on those cases. Child abuse, the class five, which is an even younger-aged child, that was up 43% from last year. The aggravated assault, that was up 20% from 873 cases to 1,047, right? So we're seeing that growth, unfortunately, in a bad way. But, you know, we're committed to fighting against that. Again, we have good law enforcement officers who are out there trying to put a stop to that. And so that helps. But as that percentage continues to increase, it's valuable time and valuable resources. You know, again, with each of those cases, you have a victim, right? So that takes one of the victim witness assistants from my office, who's going to make sure that they understand their Marci's rights, understands when the court dates are, you know, the input that they can give. And so the victim cases take more time than any other case. And those severe cases, they're costly on a societal impact, like Commissioner Karski noted, but also just in the resources that it takes from the state's attorney's office and the criminal justice system. So certainly looking to make sure that we continue to provide quality prosecution in those cases is very important. So the good news, again, as cases drop, that, that's a great thing. I would, I'd love to stand up here next year and say, hey, good news, aggravated assaults are down. But we just haven't seen that trend and hopefully we can avoid that. We had 44 jury trials, having good prosecution and investigation leads to good outcomes in court. Colin Moran and Audie Murphy got a conviction on a homicide case last week. All right, that, those cases take a long time. But getting guilty verdicts helps those victims begin to heal, the victim's family. It doesn't ultimately put them in a position where they were with those family members before, but it is important for them to feel like justice was carried out. We continue to see abuse and neglect cases. Again, with these child abuse cases, a lot of times we have the state that's stepping in and making sure that those children are in a safe living environment. Carrie Meese, Brianna Paul Maki, the support staff with them are doing a great job on the abuse and neglect cases. But a lot of times, those correlate. As we see more child abuse, we have more intervention to make sure that those children are going back to a safe environment. The actual physical space has been a blessing. The remodel, having everyone back on the second floor has been a good thing. And there was a lot of excitement as people were moving back in, trying to figure out what that new space was going to look like, figuring out the workflow. But just thank this commission for investing in the office and that physical space. We don't feel like we're on top of each other. We certainly have a little bit of room to grow. And so thank you for that. And we want to just be cognizant of the fact that that's taxpayer money. So we want to use that space wisely and make sure that we're maximizing that. The investment with new case management software, PBK, we went live March 20th. So as we continue to grow there. But I think that there is a lot of optimism about that. I think that the office is further ahead now than I thought that we would be with that software. I don't think that she's happy that I invited her here, but I did ask Kim Colwell, our office manager, to come up. She has been with the county for years. She started as, I think, a VWA and paralegal, is now the office manager. She has really taken the implementation of PBK into the office and just performed that in a fantastic way. And so I told her this morning, hey, you have to come upstairs. You don't have a choice. She didn't want to. She doesn't want that recognition, but she deserves it. Without Kim in her position, the office would not be where it is today. And so I just wanted everyone to know that and for her to get some of that recognition that she deserves. Again, she embodies what a Minnehaw County employee should be, right? She works hard. She's here every day, right? Takes appropriate leave. So I'm not saying that she's here without vacation, but does a fantastic job and makes me look good in ways that I don't deserve. So I appreciate Kim, the work that she's done. I'm impressed by it. And there's stories like that all over my office, all over the county. And people should be proud of individuals like Kim who serve this community. And so I appreciate her and I'm sure that everyone else does as well. We had some exciting things that the office took part in last year. We had the law school had reached out. They were interested in a prosecution practicum. They said, hey, we have young students who want to learn what it is to prosecute. And so we were able to teach students from the law school about prosecution. They actually came to the office. We taught the class in Sioux Falls and that was a great thing. It's great to have those young lawyers and future prosecutors come into the office and start learning, in my humble opinion, the right way to prosecute. Pennington County got one over on us. The, one of them is moving. There's some others, but they hired one of them, right? So they interviewed and saw the quality of the person who's interested in prosecution, saw how we trained him well. And so I wish him luck and certainly it's a good hire for them. But we will continue that program and I think it's going to be a good thing. It will help us ultimately with recruitment because we'll know, hey, here are prosecutors that can hit the ground running because we've trained them and we've seen that passion that they have. We also had some success legislatively. The office worked on Senate Bill 146, that truth in sentencing. That is looking to really address some of that recidivism. Commissioner Benega, not Karski, that we're really struggling with. And I think that'll be a good thing. But I think that the Minnehaw County State's Attorney's Office is showing that it can be a leader and can be a leader in a good way. I'm optimistic about the next year. And I think a lot of that optimism is because of the individuals who are working in there. So love to answer any questions. I wasn't brief, I'm sorry.
Any questions? Commissioner Kipley.
How big is your cohort coming from USD Law School to do that prosecution practicum?
We had three. We've capped it at, I think it was no more than six. We didn't want to have a really big class that first time. We, they had an event where we went down to the law school and kind of talked to those future students. We also knew that having students who'd gone through it and then could kind of not be ambassadors, but explain, hey, this is what it looked like. So I started with three.
So the plan, plan is to do that once a year or once a-- So the plan, plan is to do that once a year or once a semester?
Once a year.
Once a year. Okay. Great. Yeah. Love to have the feeder into there and get your eyes on who the best people are. So I think that's a great strategy. And I know Dean Fulton is, is a great leader down there that would, would love to place good attorneys with you. So that's a good relationship to keep building.
The students do have their final where they are prosecuting, presenting a lot of that to a fake jury next Tuesday. So if anyone wants to be a juror, certainly looking for those Tuesday morning.
Fun, yeah.
Any other questions? Well, thank you very much. Yeah, thanks to you, thanks to your staff, thanks to Kim. We appreciate all the work that you guys do.
Thank you.
Okay, that takes us to item 14. Consider five years of abatements recommended for denial by the Department of Equalization on parcel 29518. Chris Lilly.
Yeah, Chris Lilly, equalization. Before you, on this abatement request, this is an owner occupied removal. My office is required by statute to make a recommendation of approval or denial. So unfortunately, on this one here, we are making the recommendation of denial. And I will state that it's clearly based on factual and I'll cover some of those points of that. So I've submitted a memorandum, kind of a 10-step layout of how this had progressed. So Karen Roth and Larry Ingleson had applied for owner occupied on their residence at 4416 South Oak Ridge Avenue and on July 4th of 1995. No issues there. The property was receiving owner occupied status on that house through 2006. On 4/19 of 2006, in our system, there is a note that the mailing address was changed per the owner's request. And that mailing address was changed to 7505 Peregrine Place, which is a property down in Lincoln County. So again, factually, I've got, I've got a memo that the office placed in this parcel saying they've moved and requested an address change. So on 1/23 of 2007, the office under Eli Whitney had sent a notification of review, requesting information to continue. Do we remove it or not? We received nothing back on that. On 3/22 of 2007, since the office received no clarification on that, they proceeded to meet their statutory duties to send the notice of removal that the owner occupied status was being removed from this property. And that owner occupied removal letter was mailed to the new address, again, per the request of the owner, per the notes. Since that time, between 2007 and 2016, multiple assessment notices and mailings were returned to our offices undeliverable. Don't know why. In 2016, someone in the equalization office, when we received the assessment notice back, made the change back in the program to change the mailing address back to the situs address of this property. Since that time, no mailings have been returned. In 2020, however, the property was not reinstated owner occupancy. It was sitting as non-owner occupied because we didn't have an application on file to do that. In 2022 here, for the 23 assessment, our office again attempted to contact any individuals within the county that potentially could qualify. So we queried our system of everybody that their site address and their mailing address matched, but they were not receiving owner occupancy. Again, as I've let the commission know, we mailed out 2,700 mailings. This was a property that flagged up. As such, Karen Roth and Larry Ingleson came to our office and filled out a new application on 1/2723. So we have processed that. They are back owner occupied as a 4/23 pay 24. In that discussion with them, they were asking why it was removed. And I'd stated all these facts to them, that the office received notification of request to remove or to change the mailing address, which obviously you have to be an owner, you have to occupy it, it has to be your principal residence to qualify. To their statements then, they felt that this was removed in error. Their statements are that they did not request the address change. Again, my office's recommendation on this is for denial and it's purely on the factual basis that the office at the time made the legal requirements to send the notifications of removal that were required to do. So that's where we're at. I believe Larry and Karen are here to speak on their part. And then I will step back up if you have any other questions of me, unless you have any right now.
Commissioner Karski.
So way back in 2006, there's a note to change this address. We don't know who made the request. Was, is it possible there was a mistake made in the office? I know that's before your time, Chris, a long time.
Right. This is a hard one to piece together. It is very possible. In all honesty, I think there was a request to change an address. I think the notice, the memo in the parcel was placed on an incorrect parcel. We did research with Lincoln County, the Peregrine address, to see if either party had ever owned a property down there and they haven't. So I honestly, in my sincere opinion, think that we had a request to change a mailing address on a parcel. I think it was typed inadvertently and placed on the wrong one, which caused this whole chain of events. However, like I said, factually, I have to recommend denial because the office's requirement is to send notification anytime we're removing owner occupancy. That step was processed. And actually, it was, it was a step further than we are required to do. They sent out a letter of clarification. They got no response. Then they sent out the removal. So again, my recommendation of denial is factual basis only, that the steps were made. Sincerity, I do believe that the memo and the change of address was incorrectly placed on a wrong parcel.
So this board has the authority to override that?
You have the authority to do whatever your heart's desire. You do not have to follow my recommendation. I am just required to make one, whether approval or denial. And I can only recommend on factual.
Yeah, based on statute. Okay. Thank you. How many years can we abate? Is it the five?
Yeah, it's five years. Everyone, typically, we do standard three is kind of a, kind of a norm. When we get into the hairy details of this, almost all of these, then we run through the state's attorney's office to research the crypticness. And if Eric wants to expand on that, it is very cryptic language in the law for abatement. And it's, and I'll just paraphrase, it's something like four years from when the last tax bill would have become delinquent and yada, yada, yada. It's, I'm not comfortable ever translating those when I have those that are really in question. I send them to the state's attorney.
Thank you.
So it's three, four, or five, depending on circumstances and timing.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Any other questions for Chris at this time? All right. If the property owners like to come forward? Good morning.
Hi, I'm Karen Roth. I'm with my husband, Larry Ingleson. We live at 4416 South Oak Ridge Avenue here in Sioux Falls. And Chris has really outlined what I wanted to talk to you about. I did bring some documents here that perhaps he's already shared with you. But they show that the notice that was, well, first of all, let me say, Larry and I have lived at, at our address since we bought it in 1991 and have never lived at a different address or been aware of this Peregrine address or known anybody who lived there or had any reason to request a change to that address. It was news to us. So I think my point would be that when you send notice to an incorrect address and you receive back from the addressee that the, from, that the addressee is unknown at this address, which I do have in this file, if you want to see it. We really did not get notice. We finally in 2020, 2000, January of this year, 2023, got a notice and responded to it in that same month. So you can see that it would not be characteristic of us to ignore notices for 16 years. So yes, we are requesting a five-year abatement. If it were possible to request the whole 16 years, we would like to do that because this was clearly out of our hands for the whole time. And it, last year, the amount would have, this year, the amount would have been about $900. It's impossible for me to figure out with all the different levies what it would have been over time, but it's cost, this error, this clerical error has cost us thousands of dollars.
Questions? Any questions from the commission?
I have a question. I don't know if it's necessarily for the owner, but if the assessment notice has changed, is the tax bill also go to the, what address does the tax bill go to?
Now, prior to 2006, everything was going to the 4416. From, from 2006 through, or from 2007 for sure, from what I could find that was in the documents, to 2016 was going to the 7505 Peregrine. Tax bills, assessment notices, any other mailings. And ultimately, not every one of those were scanned into my system, but the majority of those were scanned as returned mail.
Okay. Okay. So I'm assuming then that, like most properties or a good number of properties, this property probably had a mortgage and the escrow was paying the tax bill. So you didn't really look for that. Okay. Okay. Okay.
Any other questions from the commission? Any public comment on this item? All right, I turn it over to the commission for discussion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
I guess I, to put the state's attorney on the spot, we heard from Chris, what do you or how do you interpret what our authority, how far back our authority lies in this abatement?
Madam Chair, Commissioner Karski, I believe under 10181.1, it's pretty clear, per our interpretation, I would agree with Director Lilla's interpretation of the wording of the statute being very cumbersome and it's archaic language. But Maggie Gillespie and myself both agree that the interpretation is it's five years is the extent that you can go back. So regardless of your personal interpretation of the fairness involved in the issue, this one or any others, going further back than that statutorily, you're not permitted to go back any further than 10 years. So you start from the year the taxes are actually due and accrued and then start from four years after they would be delinquent, which means a year after they actually accrue. So that's five years worth of taxes is the extent you can go back.
Okay. I gotta ask Director Lilla, if I may. So 2022, you started the 2,700 mailings. That's kind of above and beyond what you're required to do. And that's how this may have been discovered?
Correct, correct. Yes. We are not required to send a set, or owner occupied applications out. That is not our requirement. It is the duty of the taxpayer, the homeowner, to be well informed and to make those. Now typically, when you purchase a house, a lot of your title companies, your banks and things like that, as they walk you through those closings, inform you that you are probably eligible to receive owner occupancy and you need to make application. And there has been steps moved forward on that, where now, it used to be it required a paper form to be made to our office. Now through Department of Revenue, there is an online application where you can go right on the, on a website, click it and it emails to every county. You can do that anywhere. So there has been some great improvements in that process. We get them both and we strongly encourage people sometimes. And I've had multiple people that we might end up with two or three applications in one year because they bought it, the closing agent brings one down, they go online, they fill one out, then they want to make sure they get it and they come into our office. I don't care as long as I have one. That's the, that's the primary goal of us. So yeah, we went above and beyond to try and isolate anybody out there in the county that, that we felt mailing and site addresses matched, that potentially could qualify. Not all of them, you know, we mailed out 2,700 of those. I don't know the exact number we received back, but I know it was a lot that have been sitting there, either unknown, they didn't know, maybe they bought the lot and then they built their house. Well, now it doesn't go through a closing. They just goes into a mortgage. They are not informed or are not aware. So there's multiples of those. I think it was a good step for our office to do. We will continue to do this annually now. Hopefully, our numbers are less and less and less on, on the mailings because it's a, it's a big expense. But we want to take care of the taxpayers and give them any benefits that they potentially could qualify for. And that's how this one came up. So.
Further questions?
I'm ready to make a motion if there aren't other questions. I just need to know how to, am I denying the denial to recommend the approval? What am I doing here? I guess that's my motion was to deny the Director of Equalization's recommendation and approve the abatement.
For five years.
For five years. I'll second that.
Motion in a second. Any further questions, discussion? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to item 15, which is to consider a resolution to establish the number of allowable off-sale and on-sale liquor licenses and the fees to be charged. Good morning.
Good morning. Leah Anderson, your county auditor. Before you this morning is a resolution which would set the number of allowable off-sale and on-sale liquor licenses and also the fees to be charged for the various classifications of licenses to be effective for the coming year. The liquor license resolution must be approved each year. And the original ordinance, which is MC 21-59, which established the requirements, fees, and regulations for the issuance of alcoholic beverage licenses within the county, was adopted in August of 2021. At that time, the county also set the number of liquor licenses at 13 based on the 2020 census. One question that we've talked about is, I asked, I said, well, do we increase that number? Even though we've had growth in the cities, the county, the rural areas are, have not really grown. So as developments occur in the county, sometimes they're annexed into the cities nearby. And so that keeps our growth a little bit stable. So anyway, the, the license number would remain unchanged at this point. Also, we are not looking at changing any of the fees, with the exception of the publishing fee, which we would like to increase to $55 from $50, just based on increased costs of publication. And I will try to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for the auditor? All right, any public comment on this? Pretty much managed to clean out the room, so. All right. I would consider a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Karski.
Aye.
Kipli.
Aye.
Benega.
Aye.
Blainberg.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, that takes us to opportunity for public comment for something not on the agenda. Anybody here wants to run to the mic? Okay. Seeing nobody. That takes us to Commissioner Liaison Reports. Are there any liaison reports this morning? Commissioner Karski.
Last week, after our meeting on Tuesday, I left, we got done at noon and I got in my car and drove to Pierre and had another three hours of meetings for the State Association of County Commissioners Board meeting and a good board meeting. Then all day Wednesday and Thursday and Tyler was there on Wednesday. And Thursday, we wrapped up at 3 o'clock, but we had numerous presentations from different offices, primarily within the county or state government. Everything from equalization valuations to how to build a county road to, it was very good, informative, two days and it was time well spent. It's biannual, so every other year this is done. There were about 120 county commissioners present. And at the same time, across the hall, we had the, the county officials were there. They had, so we had the auditors, the treasurers, the registrar deeds for their training too. A lot of newly elected people, so it just, you know, we, we pay a membership to the State Association and, and what value we're getting out of it. We talked, and we also went up to the, myself and a few of the other board members went to the State Capitol because the executive board of the Senate and the House were meeting to talk about some of the summer studies and county funding is a big priority in that. So I spent a few minutes testifying before the legislators at that point about county funding. So all in all, very productive time at the State Capitol.
All right, thank you very much. Any other reports? Any other reports? I understand Commissioner Kipli had a long night.
Yeah, I've got a couple others here before we talk about planning and zoning. Judge Howman kind of mentioned on the courthouse side, some, there was a security committee meeting and then I think later this week, I'm going to attend a training event over there on some courthouse security. So, just getting a better lay of the land of some of the facility, planning and security elements of that building. And then also, Commissioner Karski, I think maybe you touched on this, but both of us met with Tracy Smith and the Public Defender's Office this, earlier this morning and just touched on, again, I think this is productive conversation that people are starting to look ahead to the Juvenile Justice Center, new layouts, new courtroom, what are, what's going to be the space over there? Will there be dedicated space for various types of attorneys that would be representing clients or the state in proceedings there? And I trust that Commissioner Bender and Commissioner Benega on that building committee here, looking at all different options, but obviously, it was the Public Defenders thought that it would be nice to have some form of dedicated space, so we can talk about the details as we go on that. And then finally, planning and zoning last night was a marathon. We finished up at 11:55 and I'm kind of disappointed in myself that I couldn't filibuster for five more minutes to make it a two-day meeting. Covered, covered, go into Tuesday morning there. But it was a productive meeting. In some ways, we covered a CAFO and some other issues that I think we didn't know were going to be as controversial as they were. We knew obviously that the pipeline ordinance was going to come up. So, for this group, for your information, we did recommend approval to kind of keep that moving. Basically, I think there's some amendments that will be needed and we'll take that up when it comes to us in May. Frankly, I probably would have been a no vote if it was for final passage, but knowing that that's just part of the process and that we've got to keep the process moving forward and I think there's some constructive ideas around some amendments to make it more workable. So, I think our body will be a little bit more nimble at taking up those amendments and tweaking the process and further taking input from members of the public than our colleagues on the Planning Commission weren't looking so nimble to take on at 11:45 at night to look at some amendments and whatnot. So, I think just passing it through as a vehicle was kind of where it was coming from, but we'll get the opportunity to take that up in May. So, I'm hoping that we can, another practical consideration of that late of a meeting, it's also probably not fair to members of the public that have to come and sit there all night and then don't get their opportunity to talk until about 11 o'clock at night. So, going forward, I think as we try to plan those meetings better, I, one thought that was brought up was to maybe have a special meeting on the pipeline ordinance separate and apart, just have two Planning Commission meetings in the month at a reasonable hour, like 7:00 PM and give opportunity for comment such that we would have had two meetings that went till 9:00 or 10:00 o'clock at night instead of one meeting that went till midnight. So, just some lessons learned as we're administering some of those things, so learning things the hard way. But that's my set of liaison reports, so thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Anyone else? I would just say that I've started, this week is going to be a lot of meetings with different department heads to start talking through their budgets and I'd encourage the other commissioners to be scheduling those as well. I think they need to, each department head or elected official needs to have their budget in first week of May, I believe. And so, time is of the essence then at this point. So, it's a good opportunity to sit down with various people that we're liaison with to understand their thought process going into the budget. It's always a very important time of the year and a great opportunity to hear, you know, some of the things that we heard in presentations today, forward-thinking about what is coming down the pike and that will be needed. We also had another meeting last Tuesday after the commission planning for the Juvenile Justice Center and after that meeting, it did come up this issue that we need to think about the dedicated space for some of the attorneys that are representing the parties involved and so, we will be continuing conversations on that as well. All right, anything else? If not, it takes us to non-action commission discussion, any non-action commission discussion? Seeing none, I'd entertain a motion to recess.
Let's go to recess.
Motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. And we will have an executive session. Why don't we try to reconvene about 10:25, about 10 minutes?